Okay, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, as we move into summer along the beautiful Gulf Coast here, I thank you for the men and women on this board for their work and the concern they have for our community. As we look across our nation, Lord, we see there's much hurt, many areas of concern about what the future holds. But, Lord, we also remember the victories that you brought us in the past. Lord, even today, as we celebrate Flag Day and look at our stars and stripes, we look at it with affection and know that you have blessed our nation beyond measure. We remember the victories that you've given us in the past that were not easily bought, but were won through diligent efforts of noble leaders and courageous men and women who stood for justice. Lord, today I pray for this board and for those who will speak before it. May they all do so with the same character and conviction that has made our nation great. Grant wisdom and understanding to those who are making decisions. Give them courage and discernment to choose what is right. Lord, we ask you convict us of sin, you comfort us in grief, and you encourage us as we strive to obey all that you call us to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
I thank you, Jesus, you are the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the prayer I want to give, recognize.
Yes.
I'd like for you to. Justice, agenda, to include the circuit clerk, first item. What's to, because it was pressing appointment.
Second, emotion.
Tony Latner.
Motion to move up, motion second. All others in favor signify by aye. I propose motion carry. Ms. Lattner.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
I, as y'all know, I'm about to kind of revisit this, but as y'all know, due to COVID, circuit clerk had to borrow money from the county in order to cover payroll. We remained open, but we're not able to close because the Supreme Court ordered that the court remain open. So we never shut down. In saying that, even though we remained open, of course, our business lacked. We didn't take in the funds that we normally take in, so that is the reason that our funds were low and we had to borrow money for payroll. Now, that money has to be paid back. I tried to get COVID funds. I was unable to do so because they said I fell under the umbrella of the county that the money would go to the county, so I couldn't even get those. So I am requesting authorization from the board to issue money to the circuit clerk's office out of the COVID funds that the board received, that the county received, to cover the money so that I can then turn around and repay what I borrowed for payroll.
So you want us, so you want us to give. Jennifer, how much money did we get only, how much did we get from COVID?
The first round of the CARES money that we received was a million eighty-six thousand dollars.
And what were our expenses, not including hers?
So for the payroll for admin, that was approximately three million for the county, but then we spent another close to six hundred thousand dollars in PPE and flex glass and second supply and cleaning supplies.
So, Ms. Lattner, what you're asking for the county to do is to give you the money so you can pay the loan back to the county.
Correct.
Is that legal?
We come in and go out.
That doesn't sound right to me, I'm just curious.
But she made a loan from the county. I don't remember the circuit clerk's office was based on fees, in other words, they take in fees. And then she's able to pay her payroll. Problem is, she was required to remain open.
I understand all that. I don't know, I've never seen a bank loan me money to pay back my loan.
In this case, the county itself advanced the money. You didn't borrow it from a bank. So the board has already authorized the loan to her. The point is that she's asking now for some liquid relief in the form of paying that loan back rather than her trying to pay it back out of fees, which aren't there.
Can we not just forgive the loan? Bring this thing to a light.
Look at how to do it.
Unnecessary paperwork.
Why can't we simply amend her budget to include that amount?
I think you could, she's.
As opposed to write the check.
To include that amount and be done with it.
This is.
I mean, cannot?
Her viewpoint is that she's paid out of fees, okay? So, I mean, the office is running out of fees. You made her a loan. And if you cancel the loan or amended her budget, add it, then you would be.
Increasing.
Increase, you would be causing a problem with the fees generation. If, if COVID monies are available.
Which doesn't sound like.
And they qualify, then I think that I'd have to research to make sure, but I don't think that's a problem if you're paying her COVID money and then she pays back the county. That's just a.
And how much is it?
Sixty-five thousand. So can we have you research? That just sounds weird to me, I'm, I'm okay with doing it. I just want to make sure.
Are there any other available COVID monies that could be used for that? Since we exceeded, what you say, the million and a half that we received?
A million, one million eighty-six thousand.
One million eighty-six thousand, we've exceeded that already in other expenses. Are there any other COVID monies available that we could use to?
Not to my knowledge. Now, we are, but expected to receive another hundred thousand dollars for COVID expenses that have been remitted to FEMA, but we're still waiting on that money to come in.
And that could be used for this?
With that money coming in, it's reimbursing other PPE and cleaning supplies, but the million eighty-six that we received could be, could be used for that.
But we've already used that, right? Haven't we already used that?
That has been recorded in the COVID fund. It has not been put to any other funds yet, so it hasn't been used completely.
But is it designated for other, some other line item? Is it designated for?
Three million.
For expenditures?
It could be used to cover payroll expenditures.
Right, it could be used to pay her back.
Yeah, but we're already three million. We only got a million and a half, we spent three million, we're in the hole already, not including her.
But that's payroll, it doesn't specify payroll of the.
No, that's why I'm all COVID.
Right, so we haven't done anything with it yet. We're going to be payroll according to our own budget. So therefore, whenever we start discharging that money, that from COVID, it's A, B, or C.
But we have spent it, we spent it on the hand sanitizers and the wipes and the.
Not the million bucks.
Yeah.
It's fifty million bucks and hand sanitizer and all that.
Paying all, all other things that we did, like putting the plastics. Plastic glass was the most expensive.
It's only different.
I try.
The county incurred expenses by employees and things of that nature too related to COVID. The difference is, the circuit clerk is paid out of fees. And so she didn't have the fees coming in, even though she was requiring us to be able to maintain her office. So the board authorized to make a loan to her to be able to meet her payroll.
But those fees come from what, like fines?
Right.
But here's my deal, so is all of that forgiven? Or you will eventually get that, won't you?
No, you may not.
So if I had, if a judge fined me a thousand dollars, I'm just off the hook for paying it?
No, you still have to pay it. You may not have paid it during COVID, but.
So we'll come back in.
Well, so.
I'm not computing.
Not fully, and then we lost out on, you know, other things like lawsuits and other things that we may or may not be getting back. Sorry, I have to go to the dentist.
I'm sorry. I'm just confused, because I realize it may have been at the way in collecting those fees, but I don't understand why you think that you've never been.
So we get them as people come in.
Right.
So.
But those fines and all that stuff is still due.
They may not file lawsuits, they may not file lawsuits that they didn't file during COVID. Maybe they're no longer going to file them, so we wouldn't have that money.
There's no way to tell Beverly that those same fees could, will be collected once they pass.
But we don't have a deadline on when that comes, do we?
No, and that's what I'm saying, there's no way to get around the fact that the county can forgive that loan or anything, that's, that's no, not possible due to the fact that it's fees.
Exactly.
That's something we have to look at, because ultimately what she really wants to do is create an accounting trail that you pay her loan. And then she pays it also, she's got to watch out on her books. If you forgive it, I mean, there's all kinds of ways to do it, I'd have to look at that.
Well, can you find one for us? And I'll entertain a motion to have our board attorney figure out a way to help.
That's fine. We'll figure out what's available, if there is some.
Just for clarification, Jennifer, that there is no COVID money non-committed that we could use to pay her?
The original COVID, the orig, there's some original COVID CARES Act money that came in, that a million eighty-six thousand, that has not all been spent yet.
But then why can't we dedicate a portion of that that has not been spent yet? It's not, it's not encumbered, is it?
No, sir, not all of it.
Is it, how much did you say?
Sixty-five thousand.
How much?
But was that not?
Is there sixty-five thousand available? That's non-encumbered, that we could use to pay her off?
When that money came in, we put it into the COVID fund to cover the COVID expenses. But the payroll was paid out of the general fund and the road fund. We have not reimbursed those other funds for the payroll amount.
That's what you're supposed to use to do that.
Well, we haven't done that yet until we.
But there is.
Encumber all the COVID expenditures. There's still some out there, but there's not sixty-five thousand.
I'm simply asking you a question. Are any, are any of those COVID funds non-encumbered that you can anticipate that we've already committed to, that could be used to pay that loan off?
If you wanted to use what's left of the million eighty-six thousand.
Which is left? Ma'am, what's left?
And it's unencumbered that we could use. But I'm trying to say, I don't want to use the money to pay her off and then come back, you come back here in two or three months and say, now we got to do this.
But what was submitted for reimbursement. Had to do with the payroll. We had to submit all that information to them.
They're not reimbursing any of that payroll. They are not going to reimburse that for discussions that I've had with Matt.
Seems like that would be what they need to do to reimburse this payroll.
Apparently, there's six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that is in the COVID fund.
That is unencumbered?
Maybe fifteen thousand of it might be encumbered. So a majority of it, you're right, is not encumbered.
And you don't, and in, and what you, do you anticipate other real needs for that unencumbered fund?
That would be more of a question directed at Matt Stratten with AMX as far as are they going to expend any more money with PPE and cleaning supplies? I don't know.
Well, I don't anticipate that now. That, that should, if there are unencumbered funds, isn't that COVID money enough to cover that sixty-eight thousand?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand, I make a motion to cover that, if that was an unencumbered fund.
Discussion, we still need to have our attorney make sure that we can do this correctly, right?
I'll research and make sure we're okay with that, and I can, I'll just make a subject.
There shouldn't be any trouble if that, those COVID funds are for that purpose?
The difference between the county payroll and her, her payroll is by fees, okay? Fees aren't generated, she's telling it to pay her employees regardless, this is where the problem. Counties are rarely supported by ad glourum taxes. We may have an issue coming up in the future because ad glourum taxes may go down. I don't know that yet, but it looks like.
We know we got an issue today.
Yeah, but today, I mean, ultimately, the ad glourum taxes weren't affected. Her ability to pay payroll was directly affected by.
But Tim, you do not see a legal issue with us using the monies we talked about, those pay.
No, I think it qualifies for payroll.
Pay that sixty-five thousand dollars off, that's what my motion is.
But it's not, you're saying, she was saying that it's not qualifying for our payroll or our.
Well, it qualifies for hers.
But I guess because she couldn't collect her fees to pay her payroll.
I'll confirm that before we do anything.
No, the, the million eighty-six would qualify as on payroll, but it would not cover what the county, what the county incurred.
Oh, no.
No, no, we understand that, but it had, so that's what it was supposed to be used for, to go towards that expenses.
Well, in discussions with you when that money came in, we put it into the COVID fund to cover some of the consumable supplies in PPE and cleaning supplies.
Right.
Once we incurred that money, then we were going to.
Because that was a million dollars.
See what was left to be allocated for payroll.
Right. And we can do that. I thought you said we couldn't use it for payroll.
I thought we, I thought we said we could.
That's what she said, we could.
No, we can use it for payroll. But it's not to cover all the payroll that has been incurred.
So, let me understand. Sorry, let, the money that we have is not encumbered. However, we're going to pay everything that it cost us with COVID and then go back and look at personnel and see if we have enough money to cover. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be allocated to cover some payroll.
Some payroll. Not all three million.
But the point is, let's assume that we don't have enough in that fund. Just make an assumption that we don't. Those other costs of payroll cost, we could amend budgets to cover those. In this particular situation, since it is a, a fee-based, we cannot. But if we get short or we come short on other payrolls, we can amend the budgets to cover that.
Right.
We can in this particular situation. So use the money that we have to cover her expenses and if push comes to shove, then we can later consider amending budgets to cover those shortfall.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All there is in favor signify by aye. All there is opposed, motion carries. Item one, thank you. To recognize Mr. Michael Davis, President of Henderson Point Pastor Chan Association. Just think about the short-term rental ordinance. And if you would, Mr. Davis, keep your comments between thirty and forty.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you all so much for having me today, I appreciate that. It's a privilege to be the first on the agenda today. I know it's a big, we've got a big day, and I'm looking at this thing, and I hope you all get paid a lot to cover all of this.
No.
Hope the benefits of you deserve it. Um, my name is Michael Davis, I live at 311 Sandy Hook Drive on Henderson Point. And right now, I'm the president of the Henderson Point Pastor Chan Association. Our association's been around since nineteen fifty till we seventy years young. And we represent about two hundred members, three hundred houses in that community. Uh, before I appeal to what I'm here for, I want, first of all, I appreciate the wonderful work that our supervisor, Aladdin, has done for our community. He's been more than a friend, he's been family, he's looked out for us, ways of protecting us, keeping us clean, making sure that we have everything we need at all times. I want to thank him very much for that, and I hope he never retires. And secondly, I also, I want to thank this board, because you all have taken on a, yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, Mike, I only committed to you twenty dollars, but you keep going like that, it's going to cost you.
Oh, Marlon, I'm, we, we're going to take this high, I'm going to take you all the way to government.
Just a whole minute.
I also want to thank this.
I'm counting that, a minute.
I want to thank your supervisors too. You all have taken on initiative on behalf of Supervisor Aladdin. And that has to do with our blighted properties. I know that we have this, some law, this menace law, that allows you all to intervene on some of these properties. Since Katrina, we've had these structures that still stand, and thanks to you all and my efforts to knock on doors and beg people to take them down, we've taken down three of the eight. We've taken down the old lumberyard. So I think our community post-Katrina is the best it's ever been, it's getting better. Since I've taken on the presidency, I took shows of short straw about nine months ago. I busted my butt knocking on doors, begging people to do what I think is right for our community. I'm here for your help today, and that has to do with a very serious issue, an issue having to do with commercial rental property. Before I do that, let me share with you just a couple of things that have happened over the last year. On the end of my street, we're right on Henderson Point. Just to give you a lay of the land, I gave you a handout. If you look at that opening, they show you a picture where we are. We are the unincorporated western part of the county, bounded by the Gulf of Mexico, the Bay of, Bay St. Louis in the southern part and northern part. We represent three areas, the Isles, Henderson Point, and the Point, three hundred houses. At this point, we're not governed by anything. But just about a year ago, at the end of my street, there were about thirty cars that spent the night, or people in a big group, at some big wedding function. Well, the next morning, Jim Hurtin has pictures of Wall Surgeon straight. Last year, one of my friends and neighbors, Bruce Thompson, um, he lives in a cul-de-sac right on the end of Elma Avenue in our street, that when he comes home, they have two rental properties that sit within a hundred feet of his home. He can't even get in his driveway. He came home one time last year, there was a whole bunch of children playing in his front yard, people he didn't know playing soccer. This is not uncommon. And I think the worst of all is one of our, our very dear neighbors. His name is Dr. Rick Paddock, he's a urologist in New Orleans. His second home is over in our neighborhood. And I was talking to Rick the other day, and his dream is always loves the area. He loves the quality of lifestyle. But he said to me, he says, you know, Mike, with what's happening in my next door neighbor with this rental, I don't even know if it stays like that, I couldn't even retire. This is what's happened over time. This problem is only going to get worse. Slidell, Louisiana, if y'all are familiar with that Eden House area when you cross the bridge, well, Eden House is right before you go to New Orleans. It's so bad, Eden House. I have two clients, I'm a financial advisor, that are moving because the rental properties are so prevalent and the disruption. Now, a little lay of the land to see the transition that's happened is that five years ago, our community did not have this problem. Rental properties have always existed on the Isles and I'm sure throughout the county. But the majority of those rental properties were single-family homes. Homeowners that ran into their family, into their friends. But what's happened in the last five years, it's transitioned more into the commercial aspect, to build a house or to rent for the sole purpose of property. In our community, on Henderson Point, there's seven properties right now. Two more to be added before too long, with the sole purpose to rent to large groups. And when people come into this area, they don't come to knit on the back porch and watch TV. They want to party. They bring the boombox, they get on the end of the figure, they make a lot of noise, and they party all night. And the disruption is causing chaos in our community. What we need your help, and I guess I'm begging you for your help, is this board's consideration to bring to this group and put us on your agenda to consider some level of rental ordinance. Now, I'm not an attorney. Tim knows what I'm understanding from the research I've done, maybe you can share with me, that Biloxi, Gulfport, Long Beach, I believe Long Beach, but I know Pastor Chan two years ago passed a very restrictive rental ordinance, governing occupancy, noise, advertising, parking, these things. A strict ordinance is in place in Pastor Chan. We are totally exposed. What we're aware of however, though, is we do have remedies. As neighbors, as citizens, we can pick up the phone if somebody's making too much noise. I can call Captain Gray Federico and he's going to shut it down. But it shouldn't be up to us. This problem is getting worse by the day. And I see myself in my neighborhood, but also as president of this organization, is what will it look like in three to five or ten years? Are there going to be twenty of them? What will it look like, Slidell? We pray not. So my ask of you all is simply this, as president of my association, is to put us back on your agenda for consideration of some rental ordinance. We did pass one at the planning commission, Patrick, you may comment on that.
It's on our agenda today, number twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Sir, if you'll hang around, we'll vote on it here in a minute.
Okay, so I, I guess my question and my beg of you all is, give us some consideration, please. We need some boundaries, that this can be a win-win. This can be a win for the renters, this can be a win for the neighbors, and I beg of you is, please give us some help. We need some help in our community.
When you suggest a remedy, what would be your suggestion? Of course, if it's a rental house, a family moves in, you have no problem with that, but short-term rentals in general, you'd like to stop?
I don't want to stop, I don't want to stop.
What would be your remedy suggestion?
Here's a remedy suggestion. This is what it should look like to me, is number one, is before someone rents in a residential area, that they first of all have a special notice with specific rules around sound, around parking, around.
The amount of people.
The amount of people. Specific rules that are, first of all, I think the first thing needs to happen with these rental properties should be registered with the county. They should be inspected before they're rented. They should pay taxes to you all and give you revenue. And most importantly, there should be some remedies if they file up. It's the owner's responsibility governing these properties. They should have specific rules posted, and those rules should be read and acknowledged before rental agreement is signed. The remedy to control this is if they violate those privileges, they lose some rights to rent. I was, this past week, I went to Charleston with my wife. I took a drive down to an area called the Isles and Palms. Beautiful area, right on the ocean, gorgeous, beautiful old homes, been around forever. But amongst that is rental properties. I went to one of the rental agencies, I asked about that, I said, what do you all do with your short-term rentals? Oh, they said, we have very strict rentals. These people have significant investments in these properties, that the renters are required to stick to the rules. If they violate those rules, they lose those privileges. So we're not against rentals, yeah, go ahead, please.
Please. You said you have a homeowners association, correct?
We don't have a homeowners, we have a civic. We have no authority, we have no power.
Could you not, could you not, as a neighborhood, have a homeowners, homeowners association or civic, whatever we'd call it, and instill those rules and regulations that the majority of the people in that neighborhood wanted that to happen?
Thank you.
And the organization of a, you know, homeowners association, call it.
We have it in my neighborhood.
Right.
It's against them.
We have talked about that, we have so many, they struggle to pay thirty dollars to be a part of the association. It's amazing how hard it is to just get to pay their dues. I think the point being, I think in an ideal world, I think that's what I would love to see happen. To think it's realistic, and I think I've talked to Jim Hurtin, who was president for about seven years. He says the chance to get a death proof, you'd have to have almost a unanimous vote among all the members. They think the chances of that getting done are slim. So I would like to see it, quite frankly, I don't know if that's ever going to happen.
I don't know if you can legally enforce a homeowners association putting in rules.
Yeah, they're going to be an oath, man, they put a lien on my house if they don't.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. Can you, just a homeowners association gets together, pass a rule that you can't do such, such and such.
And it's legally enforced?
With others who don't belong to that membership?
And they don't pay the dues.
I'm asking, I'm asking Tim.
It depends, I hate to be that answer, but it depends on if the subdivision is governed by restrictive covenant.
That, I understand the covenant.
Those can be enforced and are enforced. Problem with a homeowners association or a civic association is voluntary. You know, and so if you don't join it, can't be governed by it unfortunately.
But they could form a homeowners association.
Right.
You could form an HOA and then you're going to have some power.
Can they do it in the form of covenants that are legally enforced?
I don't think it's quite a mask. I don't think they do that. I don't think so. I think that if the original subdivision was, with restrictive covenants, including creating a homeowners association, that could be binding on anybody that buys that.
That's.
Piece of property. And so, do it at after the fact, if everybody agrees, I think you probably can't do it.
That's not.
If nobody agrees.
But nobody's going to agree that that's the problem with homeowners.
You just need a majority, majority.
I think you have to be unanimous group, I believe so, maybe Tim, you can help me on that.
I don't know, now we're, we're having a county attorney give some.
But I, for the sake of assuming that this could not get done, I guess I ask of you at some level, is to give us some protection, that's all we ask. We know these people need to operate, they have every right to own a rental property and rent to make money.
The problem the board deals with is two-fold. We, we, you've got a list of cities in there. Cities are a limited area and they're able to control it, but unlimited county is the whole county. Generally, the law is, if you pass, it has to apply to the entire county.
Right.
You can't spot zone any more.
We don't.
So we can't do one for Henderson Point. And that, and the zoning, the problem with zoning is, is if you enact a zoning ordinance that limits this, that not only applies going forward, it does not apply to everyone's grandfather or before that. But then to solve the existing problem you got, it may solve it going forward. Although there's a question on these rental things, if you stop the rental, does it apply? But I don't have a dress that. So, you know, we might be able, the board might be able to consider an ordinance, not a zoning ordinance, but a general ordinance that applies to subdivisions, established subdivisions, uh, that may, you know, that way you would only restrict it to a platid subdivision, and you wouldn't be applying it to properties that aren't part of the subdivision. And you might be able to pass an ordinance that would limit it to those that would apply like Henderson Point or Pastor Chan.
Well, we have that on this agenda, number twenty-five.
Well, that's a zoning.
So thank you, and Mr. Davis, please state your name and residential address for the record.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought it, it's Michael E. Davis, 311 Sandy Hook Drive.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
395.
Okay, so we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that time, I appreciate it.
My parents lived in Boston, it's near the.
How's the brother? One other thing, I'd like to answer a special guest, she's got powers, she's a daughter of Sarah, and I'd like to recognize her, we generally.
Ms. Mary, would you stand up, be recognized? Ms. Mary, back.
She's a statue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that's cruel.
Okay, number two.
She wanted to come.
Number two, consider auto damage claim of Valerie Cahoon in amount of five thousand five eighty-six seventeen. Is Ms. Cahoon here? Going once.
I don't think she was asked to appear, I think the, our administrator recommended the payment of this loan.
You want to stand up and tell us what's going on with this?
I can.
Thank you.
Oh, there's Walker, good. I think Walker's the one that put this on the agenda to ask for an ordinance.
What happened here?
We've got a county truck that's going down Interstate ten eastbound, had a ladder in the back. Put it in the opposite way, and it should have been. Put it in the opposite lane, and it should have been, blew out, caused the traffic to... No damages to the traffic behind, but our county truck, when they saw it occur, went to the right at the Little Market exit to pull over. And when they did, Ms. Cahoon was coming on the home ramp to get onto 10, and had an impact. Damages, property damage, the lowest of the two estimates, $3,065.82 from D and L Body Shop.
The rise at 5,586, Tom.
I'm going to go through it next to me. Her van, she was driving, is wheelchair accessible, she's got a son who's handicapped. And team-adapted gave her a quote for a week rental of $8,6135. She had a car seat that she said she has replaced by law, I think she got a collision yet, replaced the car seat. $159. She had been having treatment for frozen shoulder therapy, and had just done her last visit. She's got 12 visits scheduled with her doctor. She, that's going to total $780. She agreed to $1,500 total for bodily injury settlement, which I think is very reasonable.
She merging onto the interstate?
She was coming on.
So, how is it, it's still the county's fault even though she was merging on the interstate?
He was merging off.
He was coming off.
He just moved over to the right lane, the way I read the report. He wasn't getting off the interstate. He was moving over to stop and go back and pick his ladder up.
Right, you've got traffic spreading behind him to move out of the way of the ladder. There was also another vehicle that hit the ladder. We've not received a claim from that person yet. And he moved to the right and was looking in the mirror, and wasn't looking in the direction she's coming up, didn't know he was coming over. And I think that liability would be...
Walt, did he merge into the acceleration lane when he hit her? Or when he merged to hit her, was she in the acceleration lane?
She was in the lane coming up onto the interstate, yes sir.
He pulled into the merging lane and hit her.
That's...
That's the way I interpret it.
Okay, where's the boards?
I think there was some negligence on our part, so I'll make a motion to pay the claim in full.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor to pay the claim, signify by A. All those opposed, we should hear it.
Subject to a city that pulled a complete release of property damage.
Let my motion reflect that.
And I corrected that on my report, that's his correct...
My motion reflects that.
Item number three. Mr. Walt, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Consider auto damage of Canaya Crosby in an amount of $2,991.49. Mr. Walt, you want to tell us what happened on this, too?
Oh, yeah.
First, and then we'll have...
Sure.
Mr. Crosby.
Okay, we've got a county driver who's in a grounds maintenance truck pulling a trailer with equipment on it, it's raining, he is on, at the four-way, traveling eastbound, and stops at the four-way stop, makes a left to go northbound on Beet Line. And, now this is from the statements that the driver gave, the witness gave, and then also this week was able to talk to the driver of the other vehicle. Our driver says he stopped at the stop sign. It's clear, no southbound traffic at the intersection. Makes his left-hand turn, of course, he's got a long trailer behind him, a long truck, double cab. Makes the turn, and as the witness stated, who was another employee of the county, he stated he was 85% through his turn whenever the claimant vehicle was traveling southbound, and would have had the last clear chance to avoid the accident. Did not stop, and a collision occurred with the left fender of the trailer and the front left of the claimant vehicle. Now, the claimant driver, who's made the claim, was coming southbound. She states that she was stopped behind a vehicle at the stop sign. It was about four steps from the intersection, and the impact occurred, and she had pulled forward to go to the stop sign. So, we've got conflicting stories on the two drivers, but we have a witness, who was a county employee, who was following our insured vehicle. And he saw the accident occur, and he's the one that stated that we were 85% into the turn. There was no traffic stopped southbound at the intersection. So, if you take what his version is of the accident, we were already into the turn, going through the turn, and the claimant vehicle or the claimant driver had the last opportunity to avoid the accident. I think the owner of the vehicle, and the mother of the driver, or grandmother of the drivers here today, and she may have some objection to what I stated, I'm going on what I was told by the two drivers and the witness.
Let me ask that. How long was the trucker doing that?
Yeah.
Hey Walt, I have the accident.
What's that now?
I said I have this accident.
Hold on just a... Tom, hang on just a second, baby. How long's the trailer? Do you know, Tom? How long the trailer was?
Over 16 foot, let's see.
So, where was, assuming it's 16 foot, where was the impact on the trailer?
Impact on the trailer was... This is where it's repaired, it's on the front of the fender. And I, there's a third of the two little trailer.
It's not much damage to the intersection.
That's where the person, so you can see that's where her vehicle impacted the trailer. The truck's out in front of it.
Yes, sir.
And I've got to show it to the board.
That's the front, where they impacted the turn. And I've got a picture of the truck and the trailer to show you exactly how long it was.
Let's show that to the board, let's do it.
She hit, was basically the back of the trailer?
Is it right on the...
On the left fender, on the trailer.
On the left fender, the truck pretty much was almost to the intersection.
Yes, sir, and this is a long rig, as you can see.
Yeah.
It's a double cab, long wheelbase truck, so that had already made it through the intersection.
But what stands out to me is driver of vehicle one, Wales, stated he was turning northbound onto Beet Line Road from Dougherty, and turned too sharply.
That's what the report says.
Turned too sharply. In my mind, that makes it sound like he is admitting he turned too sharply.
He hit the car, that was all it was.
I mean, I'm just breezing through this, and I read it last night, but that's what stood out to me as perhaps negligence on our part.
And he's no longer employed with us, right?
Yes, is that the accident report you're talking about? Yeah, and, you know, I've done, Tim will, I think, will verify this. The police officer puts down what he sees and the observations he makes at the accident scene. I don't certainly review the accident reports, but talking with the individuals is how I put my report together.
Sure.
And that's what my recommendation is based on. I don't have any argument that that's what the accident report says.
Well, that's what the driver said.
Yeah.
So, that's just what I'm going by.
What you might want to consider, if he were turning sharply, hit the other vehicle that was still stopped in the other, on the other street. That's one thing, but the collision occurred in the intersection itself, if I'm not mistaken, that's what our...
The driver of our vehicle, who you correctly stated is no longer employed with the county, said that the vehicle was not at the intersection. The witness, who was still employed with the county, said that the vehicle was, I would say it would be 200 to 300 feet at the minimum up the road, when they saw the claimant vehicle coming south as the truck was turning. Now, the driver of the claimant vehicle says that she was stopped behind a vehicle that went south through the intersection. Neither our driver or witness saw that vehicle.
But Ms. Crosby in her report says that his turn was too sharp and he hit her.
Sure.
She had...
That's what she stated. What's your...
It just seems to match, you know, he said I turned too sharply, she says he turned too sharply. It just seems like there is perhaps a little negligence on our part, or...
Do you want to make a motion?
When he made the, when he made the turn, the car was not there. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Can we hear from Ms. Crosby?
Let me listen to Ms. Crosby real quick. Ma'am, would you state your name? Can you state your name and address?
Mary Crosby, owner of the vehicle.
Address.
3515 Reynosa Drive, Gulfport, Mississippi.
Thank you.
This is a version I've never heard of until right now. I was only fixing middle video, the way the driver, the policeman, and her were all saying the same thing. She was already supposedly at the stop sign when the vehicle turned and hit her. Because she wanted to know it wasn't her fault. I was sitting at the stop sign, and da-da-da-da-da. And I talked to the officer, because she's 18. They always believe what they say, you know? So, I talked to the officer, and he told me that the man says he turned too sharply, that's all that was happening, that it happened, and hit the car. Now, this is the first I heard, that the car was not at the stop sign when she was hit. It came up late and all that, that's the first I heard of it. So, I don't know. It just seemed like to me she was stopped, because I got a way of getting the truth out of her, you know?
Because you're speaking for her daughter, 18-year-old.
Yeah, because Ms. Patty had told me, well, Ms. Patty is a Harris County, Canaya's in Texas. But she had told me that Canaya wouldn't have to be here, that either or.
That's fine.
So, I don't know how that works, either, for me.
You're doing great, Ms. Crosby.
I'm kind of like supervisor powers. We had team independent people saying they got turned too sharply, so I'm inclined.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
Got a motion to pay, do we have a second?
Two estimates, which one are you...
We made a second, first of all.
Exactly, second one.
Second for discussion.
Minus the sales tax, I'm responsible for $29.42.
There's two estimates.
I know, of course, I knew that...
These ones were $299.149.
That's what's up told without the tax. I knew they'd go with a cheaper one, that's just life, you know? I understood that from the start. Because Charles at Cadillac Place, oh, he prayed, oh, he would not be able to second, but you know, anything that's a help is worth, can you stuff...
A motion to pay the low...
Lower estimate.
Quote or estimate of $2,991.49. Do we have a second?
We have a second for discussion. Discussion, Walt, you had something else.
The two estimates, one is 410496, and then the lowest of the two is 3,289 cents, $3,200. You need to keep in mind, too...
The tax is 29...
$29.91.49.
You've also got a bodily injury claim. The driver of the vehicle...
No.
No.
She has not made a claim yet.
No, we're not going to make the claim, that was understood when I talked to him after he talked to her.
The notes of claim that was submitted to the county included medical records where she went to the Saint River Hospital.
I was not submitting, I was just giving everything that was associated with this. You know, it was understood, there was nobody filing no claims or nothing, it was just...
Well, she signed a release on the bodily injury claim.
Can I amend my motion that she signs a release?
I'll amend my motion that she signs a release for no bodily harm, and will pay the lowest estimate without the tax, because we're not allowed to pay.
Right, but he talked to her, did you not ask her for that?
I talked, I talked...
Because she told you wouldn't be no claim.
No, ma'am, she didn't tell me that, but my thought is, is that if you do that, what we would do is, whatever you guys, if y'all want to make a payment on this, we just code half and half, BIPD, do full and final release.
That's what we just voted on.
The check to vote will need to be made payable to mother and daughter so that we get her signature on that correct, Tim?
Perfect, perfect.
And the body shop.
Under discussion, I have a question. Tom, did you investigate this accident?
Well, I got there at the tailwind, the Long Beach police officer had already, had already investigated, and I just, I got there and the county driver had waited.
What I was going to ask you, when you got there, was the vehicle still in place?
Oh, no, sir, they moved off to a park.
What's critical is whether she hit, he hit her, she hit him in the intersection, or he hit her stopped at the stop sign. If she hit him in the intersection, that's one thing. If he hit her stopped at the stop sign, that's another. So, we can't determine that, we don't have any way to determine where the collision occurred, whether it was in the intersection or stopped at the stop sign.
Yes, sir, like I said, I spoke with the county employee that was driving the vehicle, that was holding the driver, and his statement to me was that he was in the process of turning, and the other vehicle struck the trailer.
But he didn't indicate whether it was in the intersection or not?
Well, yeah, yes, sir, he said he was turning, so it was in the intersection, one of the cars.
So, that's critical, because if it's happening in the intersection, before he cleared the intersection, she pulled out. If not, she was stopped at the stop sign, and he hit her with the trailer.
Any brothers?
What did the police report say? That he admitted turning too sharply, and then her report was he turned too sharply. So, I mean, it matches to me.
So, we have a motion and a second to pay the claim after receiving an appeal released from both parties in an amount of $299.149. All those in favor signify by A. All those opposed, motion carries.
So, where do I get the releases? I mean... Okay. Then we got to come back, I got to come back again?
No.
Come on.
Okay.
You're good to go, thank you.
Your daughter's grandson, she's in Texas?
Right, she's supposed to be back too, she's never there, as I have no sense of time.
Okay, so it's two... So, now I need to get to you and pay you how much the check needs to be, in fact, if you have issues in Torquay County.
Was it in, the sales tax is voided?
Yes.
We're not allowed to pay outside.
Thank you, I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Well, if, can I... She would be the one that would be paying if we're issuing it to her, and she would have to, but...
We paid it correctly to Terrence Foley, but...
Yeah, we usually do have those.
If you make it to Terrence Foley, we can't get a release, the money needs to go to her.
You got to make it to me, my car is staying for it, that's my decision.
My suggestion would be, and I agree with her, is that if you damage somebody's property, and it's $1,000 damage, and there's no first-party contract between the individual who's planning and the person who owns it, they, you owe them the monies, and they do, if they want to fix it, they fix it. Now, that's just my opinion, you're doing everything right.
That's fine, we agree, that's fine.
So, now we're going to do...
Number four.
Number two.
So, there's a failed tax report? No, $299.146.
$299.146.
29... Oh, sorry. Did the binary answer?
Say that one more time?
Get the page about you, the check in Torquay County.
I will do it. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Some of this stuff.
Consider auto damage claim for Lisa Robertson in the amount of $966.45. Is Ms. Robertson here?
I don't think she's here.
Okay, we is here. What's the boards? Pleasure.
What's the deal?
I'm trying to pull it out.
Me too.
It looks like tire damage, I'm assuming a bubble, yeah, drain covering.
This was at the, if I can tell more back, because when I saw it, I called, you know, I asked him about it, whether or not the county... What this was is, this press manner, manjaven, in the driveway. Apparently, there was a drain at some point in time, it's right in the driveway, it's in the county right-of-way, it's part of the county drainage system. And somebody put a steel plate over it, and then they paved over the steel plate. Drain was no longer there, and apparently the vehicle went over, and the plate collapsed. Vehicle crashed into a corner of the bottom of the car.
This has been alcohol. Okay, Mr. Clifford, you investigated this one as well?
Supervisor Martin, good, here you go.
I said you investigated this one as well.
I did, I did. I called the assistant road manager, and he verified that the drain was in the county right-of-way, and it was our responsibility to make it happen to them, so. And also, too, we had just got like a lot of incident weather, like leaving out that we were having flooding. So, that possibly may have pushed it.
But the drain cover was off when he got there?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, what's the board's pleasure? Do we have a motion to approve or not approve?
I mean, was it our negligence?
He said the drain cover was off when he got there.
Yeah, it was, and according, according to the assistant road manager, it's our responsibility.
We have a motion to approve in the amount of $966.45 on the commission at all. claims are released. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We have a hearing at ten thirty, but let's see if we can get to Mr. Matt McDonald first. Try to get you out of there.
Good morning.
Good morning. He's got a different program he got this through. Yeah, he's changed. Yeah.
Thank y'all for allowing me to be here, and I'll be brief. I came back in front of y'all a little over a month ago and told y'all about an opportunity we had to lease out a cell, a current site that we are leasing, or had been leasing to Ceasefire. And they were bought, that lease was bought out by a company called American Tower. They have the ability to renegotiate the lease for five additional years at the current rate. They have the right to have an option to do so. If we don't do anything, we're going to get about fourteen hundred dollars a month over the next five years. They would like a longer term situation, and they proposed a ninety-nine year lease. We had to put it out to bid, we got two bids in time when we were scheduled to open bids. We did get a third bid, it was after the fact, we couldn't consider it if we wanted to, but I listed it to where y'all could see the amount of money, the difference in the bids. To give you an example of what we were looking to do with the money from the lease, we're looking to pay down some more on the land that we bought from Bank Corp. South, the old Holiday Inn hotel site. We currently owe about a million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars on that land. Original purchase price was four million. This four hundred fifty thousand will take us under a million. The difference in our principal and interest payment will be a little over ten thousand now, and by paying it down, we'll be a little bit under seven thousand. So you can clearly see that on a monthly basis, we're generating more money than what we would be getting in a lease payment of fourteen hundred dollars. Plus, the other variable that we don't know is what happens with interest rates. If they go up, then our payments go back up more so to Bank Corp. for that land. So that is what I'm here requesting, and.
So right now, you're making sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year.
Correct.
For five years, are you going to make less than half of that for ninety-nine? Justify that for me, please.
Under the present value of money, I don't have the calculator in front of me, but the formula is a little extensive for me this morning. I apologize, but under the current value of money, the four hundred fifty thousand dollars would be about seventy-four, seventy-five years of payments to be worth what it would be worth today.
They were going to lump sum, I'm sorry, Doug.
It is a lump sum, it is a lump sum payment. Yes, ma'am.
But don't you think you, why don't you give it to him for twenty years instead of ninety-nine?
They won't give me four hundred and fifty thousand.
Did you ask them?
No, 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 no. In other words, their deal, their deal to us was for a ninety-nine year lease. And I think for a fifteen year payment, they offered seven thousand dollars advance payment, excuse me, thirty-five thousand dollars advance payment, and then a monthly payment.
And did you check the last time we had said, how much possibility of income you might have if you kept it and rented space yourself?
If I rented it ourselves, we don't own, we don't own the tower, that's the thing. The tower's owned by, by Ceasefire, and now they have sold this property to American Tower. So if they take the tower down, we get nothing.
I know, but I wouldn't say take it down, I'm saying if you could use the tower, can you put some type of stipulation in there that you get a percentage of every new customer that they put on that tower?
We currently have that now in the deal, and it's generating fourteen hundred dollars a month. That's it.
Yes.
So you recommended to do ninety?
My board recommended it, to do the ninety-nine year.
Thank you, name is?
Four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Get you upfront, long term, you're not going to get it.
Long term is, yeah.
Yes, that's what we recommended, and it'll save us money because we're able to buy down our note for Bank Corp. South on the Holiday Inn site.
So if you look at the money you'd be saving over the next ninety-nine years, plus what you're getting for.
Well, our, our terms on the land were only fifteen years, but for the next fifteen years, we're going to be saving some money.
Plus addition of fourth, I got, plus the addition of four fifty thousand.
I, I won't be worried about it in fifteen years, I promise you that.
He's getting some upfront, plus he's saving on the land.
And I'm trying to get that debt paid off as quickly as possible. Now, keep in mind, we bought that land in twenty-fourteen, four million dollars, now we're down to a million four. All the money that we sold the property to for Pop's Ferry, all that money went towards paying that debt down. So we're not putting it in our general operating fund. Our general operating fund is coming back pretty strong. And we've had two exceptional months, and June's going to be even better. When I leave here today, we're starting the supervisors convention today. They're moving in, so we look forward to seeing y'all tomorrow.
That's what the board wants to do.
Yes, sir, it was unanimous on our board to do it.
That's it?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it was unanimous.
I get it, so you're going to stay, you're going to stay some additional money on the, on the monthly expense. You're going to get four hundred and fifty thousand upfront, and then the property that you purchased with that money is going to continue going up in value. Who knows what that'll be worth in ninety-nine years?
Well, and when, and when the city of Biloxi gets Pop's Ferry ultimately completed that phase of it, we will have created another corner of ninety in Pop's Ferry, and that corner alone would be worth an exceptional amount of money. No, it's truly an investment for us. And, and eventually, when Pop's Ferry comes in, we'll have frontage available that we may come back and decide that it may be worth more to sell to a developer.
Absolutely.
You need from others, or do you need from others?
Just the approval proceeding with the lease, because it's over one hundred and eighty days.
So let me go ahead and read number six. Order approving option agreement to purchase communication easement between the City of Biloxi Inquisition and American Towers LLC, which would give you a change. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. One quick question, what are your biggest conventions currently at the Capitol?
The one that's starting today with supervisors, the municipal league, the teachers that just met with us in June. You know, y'all may not consider Cruising the Coast Convention, I do. Yeah, that's a hell of a convention.
Let me ask you, is anything new, what were they twenty years ago, same ones?
Pretty much.
Then we have a Jehovah's Witness also.
That was after twenty.
Jehovah, Jehovah Witnesses, we did, but the problem that we encountered with Jehovah Witnesses was that they had a price point for hotel rooms. And ultimately, they wanted to meet in the summertime, well, you know, those rates weren't going to work in the summertime, so they found other homes. I know they went to Mobile for a while, but Mobile's tourism in the summer is nowhere near what our tourist area is, so therefore their hotel rooms are cheap.
So your top three convention business today is exactly the same top three twenty years ago.
In terms of reoccurring of business, yes, ma'am, absolutely it is. But it does say this, though, we are keeping them happy, the ones that keep, we try to keep them happy.
Yeah, thank you.
Matt, can you take thirty seconds and tell us where we are on a hotel?
I met with, I briefly met with the gentleman in Louisiana and New Orleans that were interested, but COVID has certainly put a pinch in their financial situations currently. Now, they are still very much interested, and without going into a lot of details, their, their idea or their concept involved the county issuing bonds, but they were protected where, they were protected, Marlon, to where the county didn't have any risk, and at the end of the payment of the bonds, because the bonds would have been repurchased by an investment company out of Louisiana. And at the end of the retirement of the bonds, the hotel would be gifted back to the county. So that was the concept, I never got it to be able to present it to y'all fully because the pandemic shut that concept down pretty fast. But if they're able to come back, I know they're still interested, and that was the genesis of the, of the concept. Yes, sir, and they were looking at a two hundred and fifty room project.
Okay, it's ten thirty, thank you, Mr. Matt.
Thank y'all, and thank you again for the help that Tim and your road department gave us with paving our, our load-in area in the, in the arena. Supervisor Jones got to see it firsthand, and Tim and them did a great job, so thank you.
So we'll go to number twenty-four. We have an appeal filed by Malcolm Jones of the Planning Commission, allowing zoning map amendment requested as split. Two, two votes for case file two one zero five H C one zero four for zoning map amendment requested by Brady President Associates, Gareah Hill One Five Five Investments LLC, requesting approval changes zoning district classification of one hundred fifty acre parcel of land. The property is currently owned as A1. The request is to change the zoning district class to R1 for the purpose of developing a single-family residential subdivision with approximately two hundred forty-six lots as shown on the site plan. Subject property is located at one one three four four Canal Road. Babylon tax parcel number is zero seven zero eight M zero one zero zero one point zero zero zero. Mr. Patrick Bump, we'll go over the rules.
Yes, ma'am. So we're going to start with a presentation from the appellate. And that's Malcolm Jones for Gene Stock. No more than three speakers on each side. Each speaker has a maximum of ten minutes to speak, and then all exhibits intended for the record shall be marked. Then we'll have a presentation from the opposition, and again, limited to three speakers, ten minutes each. And then we'll follow up by a five-minute rebuttal by the appellate. Okay, this case is a little bit different than normal. When it originally came to the planning commission, it was a conditional use permit, which is a site plan approval for a specific subdivision, and the rezoning from A1 to R1, R1 is our most restrictive residential district. At the meeting, they withdrew the conditional use permit.
Okay, we're going to focus on right now, this, this zoning is only for the going from. A1 to R1.
That is correct.
Okay, so let's get started. Who is the person to speak?
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Malcolm Jones for the developer appeal box nine of the way Gulfport, Mississippi.
Renee, would you be our timekeeper? Thank you.
So as Patrick pointed out, this is only for rezoning today, not for the conditional use for the subdivision. This is approximately one hundred fifty acre tract, which is going to be north of Orange Grove Road and east of Canal Road. If you know where the nursing home is up in that area, it's pretty much adjacent to that, to the east of it. The property we submitted changed, the character of the neighborhood changed for these reasons. This neighborhood we've defined to be pretty much the immediate vicinity, which is up to Orange Grove Road to the north. On the, just on the other side and adjacent to Canal Road to the west, the properties that are to the south that go down to Landon. And the developments that have occurred since the rezoning out there in the area are Landon Green, Chapelwood, and Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake is Phase Two, this board and the planning commission actually approved back at the, I think it's been about a year and a half ago now, the second phase of Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake is on the west side of Canal Road and very close to this property. You probably remember that, Mr. Bennifield, who passed, was the one who had a connection to that development. Landon Green and Chapelwood are the properties that are to the south of this property. They are funding on Landon Road. Landon Green and Chapelwood are in multiple phases at this point, they're all been developed since. The comprehensive plan was redone in two thousand and nine. Another significant, significant change in the area was the corner of Orange Grove Road and I guess it could be the southeast corner, Orange Grove Road and Canal Road was rezoned commercial. That actually was property owned by my client, and that was approved just a couple of years ago. The property is part of the G2 growth sector, and that's significant because of the comprehensive plan. That's an area that was set forth by the county for development of this sort. That property has been developing quickly. Above it is Camelot Estates, Peyton Place, those are the subdivisions that were there before. They're pretty much built out. Therefore, the reasons why I submitted into the record was public need for more residential development. We put an article from just last fall, in twenty twenty, from the news media that indicates that we're in a housing boom, and there's a great need for residential development of this sort in that area and in many areas throughout the county, but particularly in this area. Another thing that we pointed that was significant part of the change of the character of the neighborhood was construction of the Canal Road extension that went from John Clark Road, or a little bit north of it, to Highway fifty-three. Once that road got put in place, you know, it did not exist prior to two thousand and four, I think it was. Once it was put into place and became fully utilized after the comprehensive plan took place in two thousand and nine, it really changed the area, changed tremendously in the sense that you have a major arterial collector route going into the area where people can move back and forth from the interstate to Highway fifty-three. Highway fifty-three at the intersection of Canal Road and fifty-three had a major redo in the area where they put in a red light and changed the intersection up because of the amount of traffic that was flowing. So there's a great increase of traffic that has occurred since two thousand and nine. Another point is that there is water and sewer available in the area. It comes through the city of Gulfport. We've gotten a will serve letter from the city of Gulfport, but those utilities were actually extended into that area since Katrina and since the comprehensive plan was developed. So there is public water utility systems available, water and sewer at that location. And I put the maps in the record to show where they extend into, near to the area. We are only trying to get the rezoning of this property at this point, we're not doing the conditional use. There is a significant floodway that goes through this property, it runs east and west, it's pretty much right through the center of it, and it's by Bernard, I think they call it. And we have had a wetlands delineation of one hundred fifty acres. Sixty-three acres are delineated as federal wetlands, but there is additional acreage that's also subject to the floodway that you can't build in at all. So we know we have to come, we will have to come back at a later date if we do this to try to do a conditional use to manage and mitigate those wetlands and the floodway in the area. You can't even build in the floodway at all, so we know that. This is a unique situation in the sense that this floodway does run through the middle of it. But there are acres available to develop, both north and south. We're trying to maintain all the development north with the permission that we hope to get from the board of engineers. But I don't want to get too deep into that because that's more dealing with conditional use, which we're not going to hear about today.
Malcolm, can I ask you, even if we approved our one today, y'all understand that we may one day never even give y'all conditional use to build a single house? And you're okay with that?
We are, yeah, we are.
Just want to make sure y'all understand that.
We are investigating.
Too much water over there.
We are investigating, trying to place the property in a conservation easement. If a conservation easement were to be granted, then we would not come back at all for conditional use.
Excellent, thank you.
But I've been here a few times, as you know, on various properties on Canal Road. This one happens to be one, one that, there's no doubt even Mr. Simpson was candid in the record on the planning commission, you probably read the transcript, that there's been significant development out in this area, so and in the very close vicinity of this property. So I'm not asking you to develop a subdivision or to define a subdivision that is a mile this way and a mile that way. We're really only talking about down to, like I said, Landon Road, those subdivisions that are there, and the one over just on the other side of Canal Road, which is Crystal Lake. So there is Phase Two, there is.
I can ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the purpose of seeking the zoning change without the conditional use permit? I mean, I don't understand, it's like separate mutt and gel. The two together. I don't understand why it becomes a law. I don't understand why you're coming to a zoning change without the conditional use permit, because if you don't get the conditional use permit, what's the purpose of the zoning change?
The purpose.
It just doesn't, I'm just trying, in my mind, why are you separating those two?
I understand. And the, the purpose is, is that we are also on a parallel track to try to develop that conservation easement that I was talking about, since we are encumbered by the floodway through there. If the conservation easement is granted, then we would not have a need for a conditional use at all. But we do have to have the zoning change, because you can't develop a conservation easement with an agricultural zoning classification. But we are fully aware that we have major problems to overcome, that we'll have to go through all those steps, and you know, everything that's required of the county, the county engineer, the DQ for stormwater, and all the other steps that you have to go to typically for the subdivision. And we have very clear on the fact that we have no assurances whatsoever that we would ever get a conditional use from this in the future if we were to come back and seek that. So, but it is a step that we have to go through, Mr. Ladner, to get the conservation easement and to, to show that it can be some portion of it developed for residential development. Unless somebody has other questions. There is one thing I did want to make part of the record, and I mentioned this to County Board Attorney, these are the bylaw laws of the Planning Commission. Originally, when this came up, you probably realize this, the Planning Commission, the chairman does not vote unless there's a tie. When it came for a vote, there were, there were only four members there, because one had accused themselves, and that was Ms. Simpson, because her brother-in-law was representing applicant, and that was the correct thing to do. And so we had a situation where we had three people that could vote. Well, the vote was two for and one against, which I submit was actually a simple majority, and it was, it passed. Mr. Gillespie said no. He recommended that Mr. Hartwell, who did not want to vote, who was the chairman, thought he should not vote, because it's no tie. He went ahead and voted, and he made it two to two, and that caused it to be the same thing as the denial. So it's not the typical denial and what you could normally see, and I only point that out because it's a recommendation, it's not binding on the board at all, but it wasn't likely to firmly voted down from that respect. I do think that Mr. Hartwell, Reverend Hartwell, should not have voted. I did not have to vote because we had a simple majority and it would pass, but that's just to make that point for the record in case I have to do something later on.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Thank you, Malcolm.
You're just here for the other side. Simpson gave your name and address.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Stephen Simpson, nine zero zero four, Victoria Circle, Gulfport, Mississippi, three nine five oh three. I'm here on behalf of the objectors Bruce Box and Aaron Seal, and I also appeared on their behalf at the Planning Commission. Both Pat and Malcolm are correct. This is somewhat of a unique application, and I appreciate Malcolm's word that at the Planning Commission, I was candid. I represent, I'm always candid with these tribunals. But my point is, it was in reference to the change of the character of the neighborhood, and specifically, I acknowledge and still acknowledge that there is development on the north and south sides of this property. I disagree with Malcolm that that immediate vicinity constitutes the neighborhood. I think his particular parcel is the neighborhood for the purposes of your consideration. And why I tell you that is because, and it is in evidence, it is in the record, but I'm going to go ahead and give you a couple more copies. You guys can pass it around. I'll give one on this end and one on this end, Marlon. This is a map that I provided. It is a topography map, and it is an overlay of the flood zone. And the reason that this is the neighborhood, this parcel, and not the subdivisions to the north and south, should be readily apparent to you. The topography, if you look at the subdivisions of Camelot and Peyton Place and to the south, the elevations go from fifty-six, forty, fifty-four, forty feet, forty-six, all in the forties and fifties, to Malcolm's development of twenty, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, twenty-six, twenty-four. It's drastically different. And to put it in Barry Lehman's terms, he's asking you to make, to change an A one zoning to R one to the middle of Bernard Bayou. Now, I can't look into Mr. Gene Stock's mind and decide why he wants to develop a subdivision through a floodplain and across Bayou Bernard, but I will submit to this board that the legal standard, you're well familiar with. It is whether or not there's been a change in the character of the neighborhood. First of all, whether there's a mistake in zoning, which doesn't apply here. Second of all, whether or not there's a change in the character of the neighborhood and of a public need. I don't think there's been a change in Mr. Stock's parcel of property. It's still at twenty feet elevation, where everything around it that you previously approved is forty and above. There was a reason for that, and I guarantee you that was part of the discussion when they came in here with Camelot and Peyton Place and those others. We're not going to flood. Mr. Jones didn't mention, although he acknowledged it in the record for the Planning Commission, that, well, and even though the conditional use was withdrawn that night, he acknowledged that any development would have to be on piers and up. Now, I guess the streets and sidewalks are going to water, but maybe not the houses. I don't know. But my point is, before this board ever reaches the legal standards of changing character and need, you first and foremost have a fundamental fiduciary duty to examine these type of requests in what's in the best interest of the landowners of Harrison County, for the land use and landowners. Before you ever get to the legal standard, the five of you have to say, is this smart? Does this make sense? Do we really need to authorize a rezoning of property in the middle of Bernard Bayou in what is clearly a floodplain? What everybody acknowledges is a flood zone. And let them decide back and forth how to, how to fix that. Why bother? What's the public need for housing up there? Is there a public need for housing up there? I submit there's not. You've got all those subdivisions he just described to you a moment ago on either side of it. Let me show you. Mr. Ladner, you asked the pivotal question today, and I know others were thinking that you just got to the question first. You asked if you're going to withdraw your conditional use, and they are Mutt and Jeff, they go together. You don't have to rezon if you're not going to develop, and y'all are well familiar with Gene Stock, and I don't question his wisdom. I think he's a very smart man. I think he's making a lot of money developing land in the county, and I don't blame him for that. I do question the wisdom of trying to develop on the by you Bernard end in the floodplain. Why would you do that, Marlon? Why would you ask for that? Why would you get up here and withdraw your conditional use? Why would you stand before this board on appeal of a denial of that at the Planning Commission and say, you know, we know we're not likely to get, we know we've got a lot of problems. We've done this, and we've done that. We understand. We'd like to maybe get a conservation easement. Reason is obvious. There's a giant tax abatement with a conservation.